Lay out a few ground rules before we start. We're not gonna have public comment tonight. Now, just put your shoulders down and let me explain. We are holding a special meeting on Friday afternoon at three thirty, and you'll have plenty of time to publicly comment. The reason we're not doing it tonight is because I know from chairing, planning, and zoning for a few years that we do better when we have a draft, okay? And so our goal tonight is to get kind of the outline of a draft. Friday at three thirty, we'll open up, we'll have a comment before we start, we'll have comment after we start, okay? And now, we'll have comment at the beginning, comment at the end, that's what I should've said. Um, if you have a cell phone in tonight and you could silence it, that would be great, okay? If you need to talk to one of us privately after the meeting, after we're dismissed, that's fine. I mean, it's fine with me, I don't know if you guys know where to be with it. I just, we're just, public comment is very valuable, but it's not as valuable unless we have something to really work from, okay? So, we're not, in no way are we trying to cut anybody out of the picture, I promise. I absolutely positively promise, okay? Um, so, that said, let's go to, uh, are we on March? Who do you got? Basics, oh, wait, we gotta do the minutes first.
She sent those over.
The minutes from two twenty-one that she sent have already been approved. Okay, those are done. So, I've got three or four sets. I've got, I have three fourteen, three twenty-one, four fourteen, and four eighteen. So, let's go to three fourteen first. And while I said that, let me get something else up here. All right, let's go to three fourteen first.
Both conditions only in nursery and landscaping. Want to make a motion to approve those?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
All right, second. I'll second. Whoops. Everybody good?
Yep.
Whoops. All right, next set.
Chronologically, I show three twenty-four.
Last year I showed as well.
Yeah.
You said the twenty-one was already?
No, two twenty-one.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, three twenty-one, hold on, let me get back in my spot here. Chronologically, three twenty-one. Yeah, I'm good, I'm good to three twenty-one.
Motion to?
You got it, three twenty-one, Tasha, you want a motion?
Yep.
Second.
And then we got four fourteen, is that right?
Yep. Yep, 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 yep. That's one new sheet.
One new reg final.
Hold on, so when we did the plot, you and me and, uh?
Teresa.
Yeah.
It was awesome, you should've been there, man. And I was like, you know, I don't think that's right. I'm like, yeah, all right.
I think I'm good with it, I'd like to make a motion to close those.
Okay. Approve them, I'll second. Okay, is that was, was that four?
Four fourteen.
Four fourteen, now, the last meeting we had was four eighteen, and it's this one.
Right.
And we're all there.
Where's that German flag?
Didn't we, uh, suggest something on the size of?
Accessory buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. We made a suggestion, and I think we had to, the board would like some different numbers.
Okay, we did that.
We split the difference on this at this meeting. It's just not in the notes, right?
Yeah, it is, keep going.
Oh, okay.
It's at the bottom.
Page two, okay.
Yeah, it's there.
That's it?
Yep.
She would agree to that.
Sign up on a plat, which is fine. Okay. We've locked in most of the stuff for municipal use, which is good. I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve.
Secuted.
All right. All right, minutes are approved. Now, I've got no old business, so let's move right to?
New business.
New business, okay. So, Al, here's what we did. At the public hearing on Tuesday, last Tuesday, several people got up, brought up that they wanted to be able to give land to their children. Okay, and the parcels are not big enough to meet the minimum of five acres.
So, people with less than five acres?
Well, less than, not just less than five, but less than ten, I mean, any of them.
Some with six, some with five, yeah.
So, Tasha had brought up to me back in February, the family subdivision, and I went?
Yeah, I read it.
Too hard.
Yeah. I remember what she was talking about, I was confused too.
But?
Can be complicated, but it's kind of a good plot.
But when it came up Tuesday night, we're like, okay, we, we absolutely need to do this. And we also talked about, and I sat with down with Tasha today just 'cause she's already done it, not officially, because we don't have a zoning district like that, and when she did it, her subdivisions were considered minor, so Lisa just signed off on them, okay? Then, we had a little discussion about limited subdivisions. So, we're gonna start with, um, family subdivision provision first.
The one that, uh?
The one you got, the notes on.
Tasha did?
Yep, okay. We're gonna look, did you see the links I sent this afternoon?
I did, of all the different towns and stuff.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, family subdivisions is not like an unfamiliar turf at all. And so, I want us to look at those, we don't have to spend a lot of time, and kind of decide on some specifics.
Which one do you want to start with?
Um, let's start with?
Tasha had?
Let's start with Tasha's first, all right? Then we'll do the online ones, and then we're gonna, um, in fact, I need a, I need a, I need a motion to add to the agenda, um, shoot. Um, limited subdivisions, somebody give me a motion for that, would you?
I would like to make a motion to add limited subdivisions to the agenda.
All right. Tasha, you want a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all right, so, um, let's just walk through, I guess, what, what we're? Most of this came from the county, okay? Um, and they, they have, I don't think, we'll do tons of them. I, I just, I just don't think so. But, but based on the public hearing last week, it's something that we need to have, okay?
Okay, so, what, I mean, what would be the problem, such as?
Because you just, let's say you have?
For instance?
Let's say you have eight acres.
Okay.
You've got three kids.
Okay. And you wanna split that up as you can?
Right, exactly.
And under RA five, with no family subdivision exception, there is no way to do that.
Yeah.
You could only, you could only split, well, you couldn't split it at all.
And that's what she was talking about with your family.
That is, that is exactly right.
Okay. So, let's just run down the summary first, and then let's hit the links, okay? So, nothing that we're gonna do is gonna conflict with one sixty D, right? We wouldn't do that. I also looked on candidate codes in the UNC School of Government, and I got zero for family subdivision, which tells me this. It's not an item that causes a lot of, um?
Grief.
Complexity and, and a lot of grief, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you find the griefy ones on there, okay? Um, so, land cannot be conveyed until the subdivision is fully approved and recorded. That just totally makes sense. We're saying for the family subdivision, no lot under five acres can be considered.
I think that we have a couple, i- if we're gonna, if we're gonna go to a minimum of two, we have a couple of fours that should be allowed. This is, this is a summary of the county.
Yeah.
Not ours, really, we can kind of move around with this, but this was a summary what the county says. And if we have a four, we have somebody who wants to split that into two spots for two family members. Let's say that's what they wanna, you know, do on death, or, you know, you have somebody that has four acres.
Well, okay, because, because we're gonna say that no family subdivision can have an acre, can have a, a piece of property less than two acres.
Correct.
So, you could do it if you were a four.
Could do a four.
You could do a four.
You could do a four. So, this is the county, but then we don't have to necess, this is, this is a summary of what the county says you have to do in their RA five. Um, but we can go to four.
We could go to four, and you could still split.
And you can still split that into two, two-acre lots.
Yeah, but you would be able to further split it.
No.
Okay, all right, so, um, the purpose is to create lots for residential purposes deeded only to immediate family members. Now, the definitions of immediate family members, you're gonna have to provide an affidavit. I mean, it's not like, hey, this is my long-lost cousin Harry from, you know, wherever, okay? And there is a pretty good definition. Most of, most of them you're gonna see are gonna match.
They count at the bottom.
More counties is gonna say husbands, wives, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, children, biological, adopted or step, grandmas, grandpas, grandchildren, biologic, adopted or step, aunts, uncles, nieces, and nephews, attested by deed of gift or affidavit, okay? Now, we may go with something that open, or we may decide to go with less, I don't know. We're gonna have to, that's one thing we gotta figure out, okay? Um, okay, the lot cannot be resold or deeded to, now, this is the county. We have to decide how long that family member has to hold that lot from the date of family subdivision exception. I think five years.
I, I, I think five years is reasonable. Um, county has a three-year piece. You can, within that three-year period, if, let's say, someone pass, let's, I'm just gonna use my situation. I, my mother-in-law, we, we took two acres and deeded that to her by deed of gift. Um, and we did this within the family, oh, actually, we were gonna do it just 'cause we're in the ETJ, but if, under this, we would be doing it under the family subdivision exception. If she passes within that three years, I can, if she wants to leave that to a grandchild or another sibling or something like that, she, she's well within her rights to do that. Otherwise, as an estate, it has to hold for another three years or five years, or a couple of years.
Until it can just be sold.
Until it can be sold outright to anyone in the community.
And, and here's the thing, if you're gonna do a family subdivision, okay? You're gonna be real careful who you sell that to.
Right.
Right?
Absolutely.
You've got a lot of skin in the game, there in your backyard.
Yeah. I, I just think that to hold it for five years, I mean, if you, if it's a gift of deed, I, I'm, I don't know. I just think five years is a reasonable period of time.
I think, um, the, through the links, the other people, Hope County, a couple other of the counties, as was Virginia County, they, they were five years.
They were five, yeah, they were five.
Five years.
Okay, and we're gonna go to those in a minute, okay? Um, bum, bum. Okay, the county says that the proposed subdivision cannot result in more than three lots. I think that's too small. I think, um, if you have a parcel, and this was the example I think we talked about, if you have four kids, all right, and let's say you have, um, hmm, how many acres do you need to have to pull this off?
You need less than twenty.
Yeah, and, but, but you, you gift of deed it to your four children, and then one of those children dies, and they have children. Grandma is probably gonna go, my child is passed on, but I want that to go to my children, okay? So, I think that, I don't know, I think, and I, I think we ought to propose this in minor subdivisions too. It says you can only subdivide into four before some major subdivision. I think that needs to be six.
And I agree with that.
That gives you, that gives you a chance, if something unforeseen happens, that you can have a couple more lots. There's no magic number.
No, and as long as you stay around that minimum two, if you stay within the bounds of the minimum two acre, the, the, you know, dimensional requirements, all of that, if, all of that is satisfied, then there could be, you know?
So, the smallest you can split it is two acres?
Is two acres, yep. And I think that if you have a piece of property and you have a large family, or, you know?
Twenty acres, yeah, six kids?
Yeah, yeah, or you just got, you know, like I said, a parent passed away, and there are grandkids. I think that three lots is not enough.
Yeah, so you're saying that should be five?
I think it's six.
Oh, I'm sorry, six.
Don't ask me why, I mean, you can ask me why, I just think, I just don't think three's enough.
Okay.
And, and here's, you gotta remember that you can never split below two in a family subdivision. So, it's not like you can keep deeding that and deeding that and splitting and splitting, you're just not gonna be able to do it. At some point, if somebody, you know, wants to do something, they're gonna end up selling something. Makes sense?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, we good to six?
Yep.
Okay, this next provision, land included in the subdivision application shall not have been part of a family subdivision in the last ten years. I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Because this is not, um, it's a complicated undertaking. We'll come to that, just, uh, just as kind of an overview, but it's not, it's complicated. Each lot has to front an existing road, that makes it easy, or share a newer existing easement with the addition of a private road maintenance agreement. And I think we need to have that.
That makes sense, because these, these lots, even though they're, they're being, they're being subdivided under the family exemption, what happens future-wise? You know, that's a hardship too. Let's say me as a daughter, I've got, I've given my dad three acres of land, he builds his forever home on it. He lives twenty, thirty years there, he passes away, um?
And somebody buys it.
I can't, I have six brothers and sisters, that's just me. I have six brothers and sisters, I can't keep that house for myself. My brothers and sisters, that's part of their inheritance as well, I have to sell that house.
Yeah.
Have no op, uh, no option unless I can outright buy them out.
Right.
Um, and so, that enables them to buy, to sell that into the community at large, and then that becomes, you know, just another piece of acreage that belongs to someone else.
But that's, but that's why you want a private road agreement. Because you don't wanna have to negotiate that when you're trying to sell the house. That needs to be in place, and it just needs to pass along with the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
And I will tell you that the county will require it anyway on any lot that does not have road frontage. They will, you can't land lock anything.
Okay, um, each lot must have individual water and sewer, I'm not worried about sewer, but each lot's gotta have its own well.
It's gonna have its own septic too.
Oh, its own septic, yeah, we didn't say septic.
Okay.
Yep.
So, they can't, like, have like a?
You can't run?
The Smiths' community water system?
You can't run a pipe to mom's house and get water.
Okay.
All right. I'm good. Okay, we've kind of talked about who it applies to, all right? Now, let's go to, 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 let's go to the links, okay?
Which one first?
Whoa, anyone in Loudoun County?
Wait a minute, I gotta get there first, hold on.
That's where the six come from.
Where, Loudoun, is it Loudoun County? Oh, Loudoun County, that looks pretty good to me. All right.
I did notice, just through breezing through the links, every one of these has just about everything in common. There are very few outliers.
Yeah.
This is pretty common, and, and a great?
Well, that's good. Uh, that's good.
It's a great way to get around.
So, in Loudoun County, um, their definition, I think, well, this, well, it's just, okay, theirs is no more than six additional lots, okay? Theirs also says, no one who's previously received a lot through the family subdivision process anywhere in Virginia is eligible. I don't think we need to do that.
Wow, that seems excessive.
That, I mean, yeah, I, I mean?
Speaking of D.
Yeah, if you got Aunt Ruthie out in Boone County, and she wants to family something to you, I've, and if you have somebody here, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary.
Um, they define an immediate family member as a person who is a natural or legally defined child, stepchild, grandchild, spouse, or parent of the property owner. More counties is a little looser, because don't they have nieces and nephews?
They have nieces, nephews, some people don't have children.
Well, I was gonna say, that'd be my husband, if I had, if I was gonna do that, I don't, yeah. I mean, I think as long as it's part of your immediate family, and remember, you've gotta do an affidavit for that. You can't just walk in and say, here are my peeps, okay? So, I don't, I think we can, I like more counties better than I like this one.
Okay.
Um, the property owner is required to have owned the property for at least one year prior to filing. I don't think that's long enough. Um, did they even address this?
They did not. Um, I don't know that they've ever had to. Typically, these properties are older properties that are part of larger land grants, they've been passed down, they, you know, or they've been with one family for quite some time.
Okay, however comma, I think we probably ought to put something in there, and I'd put five.
So, you have to have your property for five years?
Yep, before you, before you file for a family subdivision.
I think that might be excessive.
Why?
Well, you did my own, my own, you know, purchase here.
Okay, how long have you owned yours?
I've owned my property for three years, but when we bought that property, I knew immediately that I was gonna make a, a space for my, my mother-in-law and my father, just because of how we operate as a family. We like to be in close proximity and, you know?
God bless you.
God willing, none of my family members will ever be in a rest home. None, that's, as, we were just an old-fashioned family, we take care of our older members.
Right.
So, we knew, me being the closest member here with them, that they, and for my, my husband too, he's the closest family member for my mother-in-law, that they would naturally be coming with us to that property. Before we bought it, we made that understanding with them. They weren't, they had no financial piece of it, but we did take that in consideration when we bought the property.
Okay, so, you think a year is sufficient?
I think a year is sufficient. That gives you time to, you know, the county doesn't even have the stuff recorded, they have the GIS usually.
That like a, a mother, or a, a mother and father, and the three children buy land with the whole concept of doing just that?
Yeah.
So, how long should they have to wait if they're, they already had that plan in their mind?
Okay.
All right, it's a good thought, if they buy one, one large piece. And does the county have a provision? They don't have a provision on that, of how, how fast you can split. Yeah, I, I don't know if we even need a time.
Okay, now, here's the thing.
What's the benefit of the time?
The land included in the subdivision application shall not have been part of a san, family subdivision in the last ten years. So, that's gonna mean you can do it, but you're not doing it again.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Correct.
Okay, so, do you get the idea that this is kind of like? If we say the minimum split has to be two acres? Okay, let's say grandma's got four kids and twenty acres, all right? So, she gives everybody four acres. So, she's got four acres for her, four acres for each one of her children, all right?
Mm-hmm.
Grandma decides that she now wants to take her four acres and deed it to two other family members. Is that property now been part of a family subdivision in the last ten years? And I would say yes. Okay, all right, that answers my question. It me, it, what it means is to me that people are gonna have to think this through. I mean, it's not like you're gonna subdivide and subdivide and subdivide, and it's not like you're gonna say, well, you know, Joe, my long-lost so-and-so from California moved here, and now I wanna give him a piece of it. You're not gonna be able to do it if you've already done it.
Yeah.
Right?
I think it will definitely be an exception. I, I just don't think there are tremendous amount of people that live this way anymore, where they even wanna live close to their families, which is so many people fractured. But honestly, I think this is, this will cover what we heard in the meeting the other day, which is people concerned over?
Do it, but every ten years, it, it'll, it'll make it work, all right?
I agree.
So, pre-application meetings for family subdivisions, I don't think we need that stuff, quite frankly. What we're gonna need to develop, though, is there will need to be a fee schedule, okay? There will need to be a checklist, and there are some examples of checklists in some of the other links. And I am not above cutting and pasting, let me tell you. I mean, some of them are, some of them are good, because one of the things that I'm gonna talk with Lisa about is we can't make this too hard for her, and I don't think we will. First, I don't think we're ready to do that many, but a good checklist means that when the property owner comes in, they should pretty much have most of the blocks ticked.
Yeah.
Okay? Um, go down to submitting a family subdivision application, a deed of gift conveyance from the family, from the family subdivision grantor to the grantees, that's pretty straightforward, an affidavit, affidavit which states that the subdivision is intended to keep the family estate within the family and not for the purpose of short-term investment or circumvention of the county code. Apparently, Virginia, they're very creative. If applicable, a deed of private, private access easement and maintenance agreement, we know we need to have that, um?
Virginia also does their deeds different than us. There'd be no way for someone to bring you a gift of deed prior to that being approved. That, that, it's gotta be surveyed first.
Right.
You've gotta have a plat map. That plat map has to be signed off by Foxfire because it's in the ETJ.
Yep.
It's gotta go to, and then after that, then you can go to a lawyer and get that deed done. But prior to that, sign off by Foxfire, you cannot have, you, you can't do the deed until the plat map can be?
Okay, in this part about you can't buy it for the purposes of short-term investment, we've already got that whipped, because we're saying nothing can be resold for a period of five years.
Hundred percent.
All right. Okay, Loudoun County, check.
All right.
Next up, whoopsie.
Hope.
Hope County.
Oh, well, that's right next door, practically. Okey-doke, let's see what we got. Okay, they're pretty tight.
Yeah, parent-to-child only.
Yeah, parent-to-child only, and I, I think we all agree that that's too strict.
That's not fair. There's plenty of people that don't have children, or don't have living children.
Or have circumstances, or their family members they'd like to gift, but they're not direct.
Yeah.
Okay. Ooh, this is interesting. The subdivision administrator may approve as a minor subdivision in the creation of up to three lots in one year. We're saying, we're saying we want that to be six, but we, we want six plus the residential lot, plus the mother lot, so to speak?
Yeah, is it six total, or, yeah?
Or is it seven?
Yeah, I don't know. Good question.
Well, no.
I think if you stay within the?
Proposed subdivision cannot result in more than six lots, including the original partial. So, that takes care of it.
Perfect.
All right. Okay, everybody talks about having an agreement, okay, now, I think, what did, what did the county say about the easement? Forty-five feet, uh?
Uh, I think it's sixty feet.
Okay, that seems like a lot to me.
Um?
And these guys are saying thirty feet.
A typical road is twenty, like, a driveway is twenty feet, ten-on-ten. So, forty feet would be double that, that, that would cover?
Horse trailers, tractors.
That would cover plenty, you don't need sixty feet.
No, I'm wondering, do you really need forty? I mean, these guys, in this one, it says thirty.
I don't think thirty would be bad.
I don't think we would.
That way, if you have a skinny lot, you don't have to have such a huge?
Exactly.
Access road.
Because when you look at the lots?
So, it really needs just a little driveway. If you've got thirty feet, that's plenty of, of room to get a twenty-foot driveway there.
Which one says sixty feet?
I don't know.
For some of them, it's all the carry did, the carry.
Well, that's the county one.
Yeah, like, that's just their average. I just did this, so I should know, to be honest, but I, I let the lawyer do the玫瑰.
I let the lawyer do it.
I couldn't, yeah, I, I, I couldn't put all that together.
Let's do this, let's pop thirty.
Okay.
Okay? Okay.
That's kind of what it says here, right, thirty?
And it says required setback shall be measured from the easement. Well, that makes sense, because in the village, your setback is measured from a fifteen-foot easement off the road. Or the thirty-foot, excuse me. Okay, each easement cell originate with a connection to a public street, which makes sense. Otherwise, you're landlocked, okay? And Hope County is out of there, right?
All right.
Okay, moving right along. The Law Insider, I don't know that we need to spend a lot of time there, I just happened, it popped up in my Google search.
Okay, so?
Some of theirs is a little more complicated, um, like, if you get down to examples of family subdivision in a sentence, that second one talks about fronting an existing public street, stuff like that.
I don't think we need to?
Ours will all be sand roads, right?
Yeah, they don't, we don't need to involve, if you start involving, it has to be a public road or a street, then you have to do, they have to?
Well, then you got, then, then you got a trouble. Yeah, then you got a major site.
That's thousands of dollars, that's a hardship.
Worry about that.
Yeah, okay, a thirty-foot apron and a twenty-foot road is sufficient, I think. And that would take, take care of any skinny lots we have, and then, you know, the families can figure out for themselves with the surveyor where they want that access road to be, and where the lots would go, and how it would make sense.
Okay, let's go to FAU, QUAR County, for, for Quer, something like that.
Where is that?
I don't know, it's here in Virginia. I don't know, it's here in Virginia.
Oh, I was thinking Louisiana. Alright.
Alright, so. Oh, wait a minute, this is pretty. This talks about.
Actually, the bullets are pretty good there.
Yeah, this talks about, um. This talks about first submission requirements. And I think there's actually a better checklist, well, wait a minute, family division, here we go. Fee calculation, so this one has a family subdivision checklist. Which actually, um, we may need to pull from that kinda stuff. I didn't look at this really carefully.
Where's that checklist at?
Um, go. First, first submission requirement. Um, there's also, there's that, but I think our subdivision checklist, we already have a subdivision checklist. So, all we need to do in ours is probably make, um, annotations or another column or something, because they're gonna have to meet a lot of the minor subdivision checklist anyway. And then, we'll just have to add the things that apply to family. Now, I, I told this Natasha this afternoon, I won't get that done before we send this to council. So, remember, the subdivision checklist for us is a separate, it's a separate deal. We can, I think we can have the recommendation ready to go, I'm not saying it's gonna be perfect. I think we can have the recommendation ready to go, with the caveat, hey, look, the, the checklist for this thing needs to be developed. That doesn't stop the recommendation from being considered a public hearing. Makes sense? It just means we're gonna have to add that part.
Do we already have the definition of a family in the EDO?
No, but we're gonna have to include it in, in the, in the zoning for family checklist, for family, not family checklist, for family. And we'll have to add it as a definition. Well, yeah, good question. Well, we just need to put a family subdivision definition, right?
Yeah.
Alright, well, that'll make everyone happy, seeing as how we just did that. That's alright, but those are small, those are kinda like ancillary things we can add. Um, I don't know, did you look at the subdivision affidavit?
I think you're gonna have to get with the, the community lawyer to talk about what that would look like. Because Virginia's maybe, the requirements for an affidavit may be a little bit different.
And I already told Lisa, once we get this draft, it has to go through the attorney.
Yeah.
It, it has to, it has to, it has to, it has to, so. Okay, we'll have to come.
This seems far more complicated and long.
We probably don't need anything that tough.
Yeah, this seems pretty complicated.
I think, cause we already have a subdivision checklist, we can work off ours.
Yeah.
Um, we'll have to let, I think we need to let the council decide the fees. I don't even. We just let them do that. They'll need to figure that out. Alright.
You mean to split your land?
Well, there's gonna be a fee, I mean, Lisa's time doesn't come free, so. I mean, it shouldn't be like a major subdivision or something like that, but there will be, and maybe we just make it the same as a minor, I don't know. Alright, okay, uh, Virginia's out of there?
I agree.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, and next up, in our pageant, we have, ooh, Lincoln County, I think that's in North Carolina.
It is.
Okay, subdivision plat certificates, I didn't look all the way through this, but I kinda like, they're kinda telling the person what they need to have. Certificate of ownership and dedication, private road disclaimer, certificate for approval for recording, watershed certificate, review op, this bunch of stuff. And some of this we'll need, and some of this we probably won't need. No. And again, I think some of this probably is best done through the attorney. Although, go to the one on family subdivisions, I think it's page three. It says family subdivisions at the top. First up says certificate of ownership and dedication for family subdivisions. Private road disclaimer. Certificate of approval for recording, watershed certificate. The review officer would be Lisa. And they have a survey, certificate of survey.
See, this, this almost looks like they're trying to replace the private road agreement that is an actual document that is notarized by all parties involved.
Yeah.
That they're trying to replace that with just a disclaimer statement.
So, we actually think we need a road agreement?
I, I think the county requires it for any, um, any interior lot. You have to have a road agreement with all of the.
Parties concerned.
Yeah.
Again, I'm hoping, and I'll talk to the mayor about this, but I'm hoping that some of this stuff that we're not gonna have the time to do, like, I don't really have any extra time to go research in private road maintenance agreement, stuff like that, but we can put it in there for what's required.
Yeah.
And then develop those things.
Well, that's something that you don't have to write as a community, that's something that the lawyers write. The, whoever is doing the deed, they take care of that. If you bring them the one, they'll, you know, if, if, if they get one offline or whatever, but um, those are things that are written by a lawyer. So, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if the community, you would have a standard, because you have to change your property.
No, no, I think if we can put a couple of examples, and that saves the person who's doing it, the lawyer's starting from scratch.
Yeah, I just, I feel like every lawyer in this, in this county knows how to do a road agreement, because they're required by the county. Because they do them on every single lot in the county that is, that is landlocked. They have to have a private road agreement, so every lawyer that does real estate law in this county has that ability to do those. And they actually have, they have those ready to go, and they just tweak them for whatever that.
Perfect.
Specific land needs.
Okay. Uh, next up.
Watershed agreement, I don't think anybody's.
We don't really need a watershed agreement, cause everything we've got is in the watershed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Who would even approach that?
Oh, okay, so where did I just go to? Carteret, is that how you say it? Okay, checklist for family subdivision.
You're in another county.
I went to another county.
I jumped to another county, yeah.
Carteret, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that on the coast?
I think it is, yes.
Alright. Ooh. We said, this is interesting, to qualify, ownership must have been for a minimum, continuous ownership for a minimum of fifteen years.
Wow.
Man, I think we've already agreed that's too much.
Yeah.
My next one, I agree, we need to spare.
No more than three lots, we've dealt with that. The creation of a lot or lots on an easement shall be limited to a one-time occurrence. That doesn't affect us, I don't think, for any one partial, okay? This one says the easement must be at least twenty feet wide.
You said thirty?
Yeah.
You said thirty. Historical access doesn't apply.
If you make it exactly twenty feet, then you'll have people fighting over the edge of the road.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous, yeah. If you make it thirty feet, then five feet on each side is common property.
The easement must be, the easement must be a deeded access to the newly created lots. Well, yeah, the easement, of course, would be recorded, right?
Yep, it has to be recorded with the plat.
With the plat, that'd be shown on the plat, too.
Yes, it has to be registered.
The newly created lots must meet the minimum requirements, of course, that makes sense?
Maintenance agreement is part of the easement, so that, that all is one lot or one document together.
Ooh, it says a recorded maintenance agreement shall be required in cases where more than one lot is served by the easement. That makes sense?
Well, they have to have it anyway, even if you only have, you know, you're, if, by nature of what you're doing with an easement, you have at least two lots. If you have two people, those two people have to agree to the maintenance agreement on that easement.
Okay, now.
Kinda count those.
Go to page two, other required information on the plat for a family subdivision. I, that's our subdivision checklist. We already have that, okay? So, we just, I think all we need to do, page three, other required information. Ooh.
Where are you at?
Page three, other required information on the plat for a family subdivision.
Okay.
Ooh, 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 areas designated as common area or open space under the control of an owners association. I think we're gonna nix those, right?
Absolutely not. Yeah, that, that's, that's a hot mess. Cause now you're talking about insurance and all this other stuff, what you, what these are intended to do
This is family, this is not, yeah.
Is to create lots for family to live close to each other and have inherited land.
Not to have a homeowners association.
There won't be any, yeah.
No, 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 that would be.
That's a mess.
Okay, but there are a couple things on here, watercourses, ponds, lakes or streams.
I feel like if there's a pond involved and it's cut by any more than one lot, if it's touching any more than the, than one lot, like if it's shared by three lots or two lots, there needs to be a pond agreement.
Yep. Um, lakes, streams, marshes, swamps, well, wetlands would have to be delineated.
Those are already done, I think. And they'll be done on a plat, if, if anybody, whoever the surveyor comes up.
Existing and proposed streets showing pavement or curb lines, well, we really don't have that issue, alright. Water distribution, electric. Railroad lines and right-of-way, that would make sense. But I don't want this to get too complicated, so really, I think we just take our subdivision, I would just take our subdivision checklist and add the things that we need, but we do need a pond agreement, right?
Yeah, if the, if the pond is split by more than, if it touches more than one lot, it just needs a, a pond maintenance agreement. That way, if anything ever goes wrong, both or whoever is involved have to take care of that, so it doesn't become a problem later down the road.
Alright, okay, um, got one left. We do, winner, winner, chicken dinner.
Who's that one? I like this one.
Oh, Caroline, Virginia, what else? Apparently, Google is tracking my location. Yeah, I like this one, it was just revised, yeah, really.
Alright. This is a little bit different for us, this is Virginia, they do things a little bit different there. Like, you would not even be able to get a person to come out and, with the county, until you have a recorded plat. They need a, a LRK, or they won't even come out.
Yeah, why would they?
So, that's, that's kind of, there's a little bit backwards. We know our county process, so we could kind of, we go through the checklist, we can say what's reasonable for them to provide at, at each stage. But, you can't have some of these in the head of the other.
Most, okay, some of this stuff, because these are gonna be, if we say six lots, including the park, including the residential, and we upgrade the minor subdivision ordinance to say six, then a lot of the things that are in the minor subdivision ordinance and checklist are gonna apply to family, which is gonna knock a lot of this out, I think. Now, interesting, important additional information, page four. Immediate family is defined as parents, grandparents, children, grandchildren, siblings, aunt, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew. I think that more counties where it says biological adoptive or step, I think that's a much more fair definition.
I agree.
Yeah. Oh, and look it, they have a two-acre partial minimum. Oh, no, I meant, yep, must be these two acres. They have a twenty-foot, okay, if three or more properties are created, then a road maintenance agreement will be required.
I think the county requires if you split out any lot that is on an easement, a road maintenance agreement is required. That's part of that plat recording.
Their subdivision applicant checklist, their fee is, ooh, two hundred dollars plus fifty dollars for a newly created lot. That's not bad.
And you're not, if you're gift eating, you're not paying stamp fees or anything like that to the county.
Okay, most of this stuff. Okay, I may put some of this required family subdivision language in, um, because here they're saying too, on page six, number three, the lot will not be voluntary transferred to a non-immediate family member for at least five years. Okay, unless the person dies, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, you know, that's a tremendous hardship if you have somebody come in and.
Yeah, no, that wouldn't make sense, no, that would, that wouldn't make sense.
Especially if there's a mortgage on it or anything like that.
Okay, road rate, road maintenance agreements are on perpetuity. Grantee has to be eighteen.
I don't really, that's a North Carolina state law.
I don't know. Okay.
That's actually, I showed it's page seven, but that's actually pretty good.
For the surveyor?
The required family subdivision language.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah, before you're gonna just.
Yeah.
Instead of reinventing the wheel, a lot of this stuff is.
I won't be reinventing the wheel, don't you worry. Okay, um, I don't think the surveyor checklist, like, the surveyor ought to know what they're doing. And there are very specific requirements for a survey, so I don't think we need that.
I was gonna say, they, they follow North Carolina rule, and then they follow county rule, and they're, they're just doing.
Well, septic permit, we don't need that because that comes through the county, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, good.
And we don't know that they're gonna build on this, this could be future.
You know what, I absolutely agree, okay?
That's true.
Okay. Alright, I think I got enough to go on, so, any, can we move on to, whoops, where's the agenda? Okay, um, limited subdivision, I'm gonna just make some notes here, though, Teresa.
What was?
Limited, I was gonna ask you if you got into that, limited is outside, it's not, it's not anywhere part of the family subdivision. It's just another separate exception that can be given for people in certain situations.
Here's what we're, here's what we're thinking, um.
Has nothing to do with the family part, that part's.
This is just totally, totally different.
Yeah.
And it would be, let's say, I know there was some concern about people who are in the seven to nine acres or seven to ten acres. In a limited subdivision, you could split that under the following conditions. Let's say, let's use nine acres as the example.
Okay.
You can split it one time, one of those lots has to be five acres, it would leave the others four.
Then you can sell it if anybody can want.
If you have seven acres, one split is five, the remaining two you can sell. If you have six acres, not gonna work.
I get it, because you can't do one, because two's a minimum.
That's right, two's gonna be the minimum. So, it's gonna cover those people who are in the seven to ten. So, a ten, obviously, you, if, let's say you're nine point nine five, okay? I mean, you're now gonna be able to split into one five and one four point nine five. If you're eight, you can split into one five and one three.
And you can keep whichever one you want.
Yep.
But one has to be five. The parent lot can be three or five, but you could, that would give you the ability to, let's say you have nine point whatever, you don't wanna keep all that land anymore. You keep the, the, you know, smaller of the two.
Well, do we care who keeps the, we don't, I mean, it, it doesn't really matter. I mean, if you do, you have an eight and you do a five and three, and somebody wants your five, and you wanna keep three, fine. If somebody wants your three and you keep five, fine.
But you still can't bust a two rule?
Nope.
Just one time and.
Well, one time, however, however, you could, let's use eight as the example, you have a five and a three.
Okay.
The five could do a family subdivision, two and a half and two and a half.
Cause that's separate, that's a totally different issue.
Okay?
Really, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
It does.
I mean, that way, we have pretty much covered everybody. And it, and it's not like, it's not like you can split and split and split and split, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta two-acre minimum.
Or would you want to even?
Well, no, I wouldn't, because you gotta have water, you gotta, you know, yeah.
So, if somebody had in the ETJ, ETJ, fifty acres, they could split it all up into twos, but they'd have to keep their five.
No, 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 no.
You can't do it more than six times at all.
This is, this is for lots between seven and under ten.
Okay, only.
Yeah, somebody's got fifty acres, they're splitting into five.
They could do five-acre lots.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, let me put that in here.
Probably, yeah, I guess I don't have the.
Um, that was what she sent me the other day, this, um, it was part of my stuff, it was at the tail, it's like in the middle.
On this?
Um, yeah, it's after the, keep going down, I kinda split it into two parts, I left the family stuff up top, keep, go up a little bit more, up, up, up. You gotta link, ooh, too fast. Nope, go back up. Go, go, go. Nope, go down, there's one, right. Nope, go down, there's one, right in between, keep going up, in between.
Anyway.
Down, 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 down. Here we go. Um, no, keep going up. Thought I had the link in there.
Is it this one, subdivision, right here?
Um... I referenced it somewhere, but I can't remember where, hold on a second. Oh, it was in the conclusion section, I just said I think we should probably discuss county nineteen point five limited subdivision. Um, it's heavily referenced in the nineteen point four, they kinda marry up, I think they were at the same time to, to accomplish about the same thing. One, not to be a hardship to those that had acres of, you know, ten and seven, um, and, and then two, the other piece was to also have the family needs. This is for, if you don't have family and you have those nine acres and you don't feel like keeping those, or, let's say, you just need money.
You still have one split.
You need to sell off five acres to get some money for your property. You know, land value's pretty good these days.
Alright.
So, you know, that, that would be, that would be what that would help out with, and it would, you know, it would help those that have the smaller lots, but not so small that they break that two rule.
Uh, the two, the two rule is like... I'm breaking the two rule.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, this gives people the option. So if we do the family subdivision provision, we do the limited subdivision, I think, uh, I think we've done what we were supposed to do.
Yeah, I agree. I think that encompasses all the special cases or most.
I just gotta get the wording right.
And then if we keep the two rule, then that would accomplish what the entirety of the RE5 is supposed to do, which is to slow down some of the-
Here, here's development, here's the thing, I just don't, we're not gonna have like a hundred and fifty people do a family subdivision. It's not, it's not gonna happen. And if, and if you look at the seven to nines on the, on the spreadsheet, what did, how many did I say we had?
I think you said we had-
I don't remember, but anyway, again, that's not an infinite number, I mean, there's only so, there's only so many parcels. But it kinda makes it, I think, um, more equitable. So having said that, um, unless we have any other, well, let's look at one other quick thing. Go, can, pull up the UDO, just, cause Lisa always asks me, where am I supposed to put this?
Should go under subdivisions.
Yeah, it should, and I'm thinking-
Under major family.
Well, I think it... I think where it belongs is, um, they're gonna be minor.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Provided, provided we can get the village council to, um... To roll on going from four lots to six. And I think, I think that's fairly doable. Because then it can just be a minor subdivision. So it goes in, it'll go in under the approval process for minor subdivisions, and it'll just have its own, its own, um, section called family subdivisions.
And then it's all, then below that, another one for limited.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Under, under Article seven.
Yep.
Subdivisions.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, and again, we're only talking about property in the ETJ, property in the village is totally, they don't, they, we don't need to do this, because you can already go down to forty thousand square feet.
Right.
Okay? Um... I don't mean to oversimplify this, but I think we got a pretty good framework.
I'll be happy with it, let me see.
Yeah, you too. Okay.
It's happy medium.
Anything else we wanna throw in here before we, I'm not hitting the gavel.
What?
No, okay, and we come back three thirty Friday afternoon, pray for me that I get a draft on, I mean, it'll be, we might have to do some, I might have to do some work over the weekend, but we'll certainly have something we can work from.
Okay.
And then, you guys wanna come and comment on Friday, you are more than welcome to do that, we'll do it in the beginning and we'll do it at the end.
Then we'll have a basis.
Yeah, okay?
If I have a whole bunch of questions?
You need to hold, sir.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna ask you, can I bring it, give it to you before the meeting on Friday?
Let me, let us adjourn first, okay? Um... So, are we good? Done?
Yeah, I understand.
Alright. Okay, Tash, I'll second.
Second.
Alright, now you can say it.
Oh, you say I'll.
There's, there's only, there's only three of us, so it's not too bad.
At least I'll say.
Okay. We are adjourned.